Hi Rita. All right, good evening. It's my honor to call the Board of Ed's special meeting. To order today is January 30th and it's about 6:05. And we are going to be marching through our budget work session. And before we do that, I just want to remind people that we are going to be meeting at 5:55. We're going to be starting off at 6 o'clock for a budget meeting with a 7 o'clock meeting with the RTM Town Council. The RTM Education Committee, the Town Council and us to talk about budget. Budgets issues. And so I just wanted to remind people of that. We are are going to be able to do hybrid for for those of us who continue to need and want that. We are, that's why we moved to 5:55. So I just want to remind people that February 1st is our annual meeting with the Town Council and a couple of years ago, we added the RTM.
And it's going to be at 7 o'clock, I understand, the joint meeting?
The joint meeting is at 7 and 6 o'clock will be our budget meeting. All right. Thank you, friends. That's been a process to get it. So I'm glad that we are we are there. And so with further, with no further ado, I am going to send ourselves over to Ken and to Susan for our next walkabout.
We're going to start tonight on page 5-92. 5-92, oh, 5-92 is our operations and maintenance function. You'll notice on on this page, we have the FTEs for for administration, custodial maintenance in one clerical. These are unchanged from the prior year budget. If we go down to 5-5-93. These are, and this is going to be on two pages because there's, there's a lot of lines here. On the first section, salaries and wages, it amounts to a 2% increase over last year. The custodial maintenance are driven by the by the contract, the union contract that we have. The next section down, employee benefits is up 3.9% driven by the health insurance, which is a 4.6% increase, but it's only driving 3.9. Next section down is our professional services. You'll notice a $50,000 increase in this section. Mounting to 185.8%. This these, this is accounted for due to some preventative maintenance agreements that we that we need to put in place or especially for the for the newer buildings and the three newer buildings and the the new equipment that we have there. Next section.
Could you explain that a little bit more than that? What do you mean the new buildings and what exactly are professional tech services?
Yeah, Rita, those would be contracts for working on the HVAC systems, the boilers, gas boilers, the ice plant at the middle school, all these things that we didn't have in our schools that we closed. So these are 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 new pieces of equipment that will need to be maintained. And what we will be doing is over the next year, we'll make sure that our staff goes along with these contractors that need to come be certified people that come in to learn the new pieces of equipment. So that we'll be able to take care of them for us by ourselves in the near future.
Thank you.
It's kind of PD for maintenance and taking care of it in the same time.
The next section down is our purchased property services. These are, these are services. This is not the the supply. So this is services arranging, as you can see, from waters who were garbage removal. I will point out snow removal, we're holding steady at 50,000. It was more than enough for last year. And hopefully be enough for this year. And I know, and hope it's enough for next year as well. Overall, for this section, it's a 1% increase over over the last year's budget. We're going to skip all the way down to 5-95. First section is other purchase services. This is mainly our liability insurance. This is an increased cost due to the the more expensive buildings that we now have to ensure. This additional $40,000 is a number that we we share with the with the town. In the, it's a, it's a combined insurance policy and this is our portion.
They've actually reallocated so that we're picking up more of it now. So that has come from the town that built.
That's right. So that's driving a 9.8% increase in that section. The next section down is supplies. The biggest items on this section are electricity and our energy costs. You'll see a big increase, 140,000 on electricity and 92,000 under heating oil. This is, this is being driven, of course, by the the increased costs that we're all aware of. It is offset a little bit by anticipated savings for when the solar panels are in place, but it's it remains to be seen exactly how that's going to shake out, but we're hoping that that this will be more than sufficient to to pay for these expenses. Another big increase is under custodial supplies of 21,348. If you recall, last year, we moved $50,000 of custodial expense to the to the RPSR fund. So this is
contemplating that. It's part of my adjustment.
But at this point, this is adding back in some of those costs. So we can get the all the all the supplies that we need in regards to custodial. So overall, for supplies, the 15.7% increase and it's driven by the energy, energy costs.
And yet I think there was some work done. You might want to talk about this in actualizing to try to find the best deals in electricity and fuel oil. I don't know if you want to speak to that because there has been work done. To try to find what, even though they've all increased significantly, I think we really joined forces with.
That's right. Yeah. So for for heating oil and for diesel, we are part of a consortium of other boards of ed and municipalities in Connecticut. And so we are joined with them in regards to finding the best rates and we would we we take out a contract at the beginning of the year so we can make sure that those rates are locked in. Currently, the rate that we have in here, this was based upon what we're looking at in November. Rates have come down for heating oil and for diesel. So we may be able to adjust this. But at the point when we we put this together, it was quite high. It was up over $4 for a gallon of fuel oil. At this point, it is below that and we're going to meet again next week. The consortium meets again next week to determine what we might be able to block that one in for next year.
So there could be further savings in that area, right?
And then on the electricity, we have, we have contracted, rather than float on the ever source rate, we have contracts for the rate. So we have a lower rate than whatever source is is offering at this point. I think with Constellation, maybe a combination of Constellation and Direct Energy for a lower rate.
So we're not on ever source, we're using Constellation and?
Ever, ever source will do the delivery, but the supply comes from a third party.
Okay. But still a big jump.
It's still a big jump, even with all those mitigation factors. Under equipment, we have $10,000, the same amount we put in there last year. And this is to cover any any equipment that custodial maintenance might need. Floor scrubbers, vacuum, these types of things. Yeah. So that's no increase over over the prior year and then dues and fees of 675. No, no, no change from prior year. So total amount for total for operations and maintenance is an increase of 478,000 or 6.9% increase.
Questions? Dean?
So the ever-present question on all public-approved school projects. It did so against for various reasons, but one of the reasons some people go for the project is because of one selling point, which was, well, for example, we go from two minutes, one minute school and save money. So do we know now that we've operated a single bit of school for a while, do we know whether we can realize savings and other additional costs? I know we've lost an administrator or two, but have we consolidated the middle school that they want, supposedly want, actually saved any money? We don't know yet, but we're afraid to say it's actually costing more money or savings have been buried by increases. You don't see them. What say you?
I'll, I'll take one stab and you can. I, I think you're right. It is difficult to 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 gauge because it, the middle school, for instance, opened right at the pandemic. Things were not normal. We have not done a comparison of what two buildings cost versus one. It is a worthwhile exercise. It has not yet been done. I will say that one of the costs that we avoided by by doing this is is there were some large maintenance items that need to happen on little buildings that we don't have to do now. That's, that's the big avoidance.
Don't be sure to compare operating to operating scenario instead of capital.
Right.
It'd be part of the equation.
There were cost savings with staffing right away and they became then, you know, avoided, cost avoidance in the future.
Right. I think, I think it would be important to package this somehow if it's true that we've saved money because in the future, beyond all of us probably, I don't plan to give it forward for years and years and years and years for the next school project. But there will be another school project and I would like to have in a time capsule or a blue slide or something. By the way, the last time we did this and we sold the public on the notion that we would save money, we actually did hear the receipts, let me speak. Okay. So believe us again, who else?
I don't think it's inaccurate to say that some of the savings or cost avoidances were buried in some of the higher costs that we're experiencing now. The electricity and fuel costs are outrageous.
But that was inflation too. That's a sign of.
That is inflation and coupled with the fact that we now have more equipment, air conditioning throughout the buildings, even though the lighting is LED lighting, more lighting, more fresh air is is pumped in on a more regular basis. So a lot of that equipment is right. It didn't exist in the older buildings and the 50, in the 50-year-old buildings that exist now. So that equipment is drawing quite a bit. And of course, the the expense of what what that is today.
I guess that it's an apples to oranges kind of thing and a lot of line items. And that somebody would have to sit down and actually push aside all the real work they have to model the scenario.
I think you might have to model what 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 it would have cost to have kept those other two buildings open. See what it would have cost and then see what the difference is there.
Yeah, that's the kind of exercise you have to do. But I still think it's worthwhile because I don't have to do it. I still think it's for future, you know, because because the public already by default thinks they're always selling us on stuff they can never deliver. I'd like to have one thing where we can say, you see?
But I also think, Dean, I I actually really appreciate your conversation because I'm also just trying to think about February 1st and then I'm also thinking about March. And I'm also thinking about when it goes to the RTM and people, I mean, we're, we're still in a pandemic, but we are, we are our buildings are all operational and it is our new normal, if that's what you want to call it. And people are saying, well, where, where's the savings? Where are the savings? But it didn't make sense to me until Sam, you said, well, we have all new machines. We have things that are running all the time that keep the the buildings moving and not moving. I hope that's not moving. Healthy, but like, but because the electricity cost has has increased so much, we're seeing an increase in that. I just think that those things are important. I think that there's going to be some people that are not going to be sold. It doesn't matter. But I think that for other people, they are going to hear that and go, well, I guess that kind of makes sense.
And what interests the curious won't necessarily satisfy the actual skeptic. Some skeptics are reasonably skeptical.
Right, right. No, and and they do.
Very loud. Yeah.
Yeah. And 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 I appreciate that because I want to, I want to hear their voice because I think that their voice is just as valuable as people who understand that was really important for us to get through the numbers. Any questions from those of us in Zoom? It's not ready to call it Zoom. I don't know why. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ken. You're doing a much better job than me.
We're going to move on to 5-96. This is the transportation. So 5-96, you'll see that we have two FTEs in the in transportation office in 18, 18.25, actually, school bus aides that that go on the, go on the buses to help special education students. It is noted under changes that we are, we were in the process of bidding out the the bus contract at the time of this publication. In addition, diesel costs are, once again, this is, these are, these are worked on through the consortium that we're a part of. At the time, we did this, they were quite high. I think, I think they are a little bit lower at this point. In addition, we had some leftover supplies. So we we get a contract at the beginning of the year and during the pandemic years, we didn't use all those gallons. And so we we made a plan to use up those gallons, excess gallons in FY '23 this year. So you'll know, when we go down to the next page, you'll notice that there was quite a decrease in in the cost. And we'll go down to 5-97. Here are the expenses, salaries and wages of 3.8%. That's driven by competitive wage adjustment for the school bus aides. And a 4.1% increase under employee benefits. And then you'll notice in the next section, other purchase services, this is where the cost that we pay to STA or to Curtin in the case of line 5112, 512. And this is based upon the 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 original bid that we got from STA. We have gone back to STA as the lowest bidder and have worked on getting some some relief in the first, first year and just kind of spread that out to the following years. So we will be able to lower this amount, but overall, the cost for the for the buses would remain the same over the, over the three years.
And then we would see significant savings if we choose to use year four and five.
Yeah. Then under supplies, this is where the fuel for the school buses, that's where you'll notice the prior, in this year, for budget, we had 133,520. And that was a conscious use of the leftover diesel gallons that we had. It's actually going to come in higher than that due to the, to the inflation. But for next year, we're, we were anticipating a total cost of 454,000, but I believe we can bring that down because the rates have have decreased since we put this together. So at, so overall, that's actually a huge increase, 238% increase. So it's coupled, it's it's increased rates as well as not having those excess gallons to use again. So this, this section increases $1.4 million, 23% and driven by the, by the, by the contract as well as the diesel.
So we work with other districts in regards to getting better fees for things like our electricity and for oil. What's, is there any potential to opportunities to do that with bus contracts in the future?
Sure. I mean, that's, that's, that's always something that could be done that that it'd be hard to, to to manage it across a portfolio.
I think the last time we talked about it, the contracts didn't line up and pending dates. So it was pretty difficult.
Like Wheat Waterford just, you know, went into a process with us today. They were a year and a half and and we questioned, you know, what they're, what they ended up with, but where it looked like so much less of a percent, they actually had been paying more over years than we had. So you really have to look at more than just a percent. You have to look at what is it actually their daily cost of running those buses? So so it is, it's intricate, but anytime we can collaborate and coordinate, especially through the learned rest, we try to do that because there can be some real benefits to it.
So do we have, where are you in the process of settling our, our work with ESTA for our next contract?
So we have negotiated with them a so, so we showed you those rates at a previous meeting that that they, that'd come through on the bid. And it was a very large increase in year one of 21% and then smaller increases. We have worked with them to make that increase 14% in the first two years and then lower thereafter.
Single digit.
Yeah.
We, I have not signed a contract.
It's a contract.
We've just really negotiated this to really see what kind of savings we can get in that year one, because it was over a million dollars and that was really to make a lot, like, how can we make this more doable in the future?
Yeah. The other thing I probably want to, I should point out is that in addition, we had, we added two buses from last year's budget. Remember, we had to add the two buses for special education. So that's, that's also contributing to this 20% increase on this page.
That, so that's in the total pupil transportation, that 23.3% is the two buses that were added. It also includes everything that we used to get from the sixth to sixth, where we have the midday run happening and the after-school run. So that's all inclusive of of what we needed. There's some field trips that we're still working out some details because we used to get those it within the city or city and town of Groton.
Are we having an extended years for the contract to see if we can get better deals with STA?
Well, that is the, if we go to year four and five, this is a three-year contract. So that's all we're obliged to do once it's signed. But if we go to years four and five, it drops down to 3.7%, which is really a win for us if that's, if it's still, if they're still serving as well, fourth and fifth.
Fourth and fifth.
So what would be, you said 14% was for the first two years, then what would be the third year?
It's five.
Five, something, 5%.
And then if we go to years four and five?
3.7 is the number I remember. Yeah, for both years.
Wow. So how would, you said that this, this page was based on the 21%.
Yes.
That's right.
So how was this going to change? Are you going to send us?
We are going to get adjusted superintendent's budget where all the comments that I've heard from around the room and on the Zoom, we've been taking copious notes and we're looking and scrutinizing every single category as we're meeting as a district.
Right. But what I'm, I'm asked, because you sent us some updates that we got and I stuck in my book. So are, are you going to, because this one is based on old data? But oh, that's because we haven't signed the contract yet, right? So we can't really update this.
We, we are putting together one of those sheets. Do you remember the mic sheet that I continued? Where we go through and we're saying, we can, you know, we're going to be deducting this and this and this and this. So that brings us down to, you know, we're right now close to 5%. I'd like to see 4%. I'd like to see something in the three, you know, so we're working our way through that. And that, that whole goal was when talking to Kim, we had things going all the way out till almost the end of February, which would have given you limited time to really think about this. So I want to get that back to you mid-February so we can chew on that some more.
I just, I kind of answered my own question, so.
No, I'm glad that you're asking the questions.
Any other questions about the transportation? Because that was going to be a large, that's a large piece of our budget if we kept it at the 21%.
Sam, how many buses do we run?
I think it's 48 large buses and about 16, 18 what they call vans or the shorter buses.
That's all together.
Ken? Yes, Rita.
I didn't feel like I didn't reach to raise my hand. Is there any way we could reduce some of these buses, 48 buses? You know, I thought it just seems like an awful lot. I know we're busing people all over town. Maybe we need to rethink that a little bit so that we're busing more to neighborhoods, schools as opposed to somebody from, you know, the city going over to Mystic River and so forth. I mean, maybe, you know, just to cut these, this cost down, there has to be we could reduce it or are we monitoring exactly? How do we monitor how many students are on one bus? I mean, last year or the year before, we had issues because they were saying there were three to a seat. I haven't heard any of that this year. Is it because you added buses or fewer students riding buses? What is, you know, kind of what's going on with the, how we populate the buses?
So the only thing added, Rita, were two small van buses for special education and that, that's something you can't avoid. But one of the things that comes with this package is a piece of software that we don't have to pay for that will actually run the buses. So we're going to partner with our, with our bus truck, with our team, with the company so that we can see efficiencies in this. So my hope is that through using, I think it's called, not Trans Binder, it's
VersaTran.
VersaTran. Using this new software, we're going to be able to really run these routes to find the best efficiency. So there could be. And if there are, we're going to take advantage of it. So we will keep you posted to see how that all works out.
And has the bus company talked at all about seat belts for students at all ever?
No.
No. And do they have any plans to have any of their buses run on electric as opposed to diesel?
They don't have any plans at this time, but we've talked about it. So.
I think they see it as a project into the future. I think that they're really looking at the data to see how reliable they are. And because the data is so in its infant state and we're hearing, you know, of buses catching on fire and buses running out of fuel in the middle of a run. I think we really need to see what's out there. It's kind of like when the first computer rolled out, you know? Some people went out and got it and some people waited. So they're going to be definitely keeping that in mind because it's going to be a time that they have to do that.
If I could just add to Susan's comments regarding looking at bus runs and possibly saving a bus, et cetera. We have coordinators that are working on that on a daily basis. You say that we haven't had any concerns about overcrowding, but we actually had a principal send us a note on Friday about an overcrowded bus.
Well, no, it hasn't come to the board level. That's all I meant.
Yep. No, well, well, we just had a complaint from a principal the other day. So we've got the tape. We had the tape today. There were two kids to a seat and some kids weren't allowing kids to sit with them. Other kids refused to sit with other kids, three to a seat. But so those, those kids went home and told their parents that the bus was overcrowded. So, so some of those things we, we look at, we get those kinds of comments from principals quite a bit. So they're looking at them on a daily basis and we the girls in the office are constantly looking at ways of possibly combining students on buses, which we are doing for a particular run right now. And using a bus for something else or possibly saving one in the long run. So that, that cost, that's constantly going on at transportation office.
And how many buses are used? And how many buses are used by Sacred Heart?
I believe there's only one, but I I'm not positive about that. Yeah, I I think it's one bus, possibly two, depending upon where they are.
Right. And and also I had a question since we're talking about the buses. I don't know, so many of them. I know that that I'm not talking about the high school buses, which I know we we've combined, but so many of the buses that come through our neighborhood look pretty empty. So I, you know, I really can't stress enough how important it would be to look to make sure that our buses are being utilized.
Yeah, if you, I I think that may be twofold. When a bus goes all the way from the other end of town down to Mystic River, for instance, we we have less kids on the bus because because of the length of a run. Some of our buses actually run the full hour and some are actually running over that we're still trying to take care of. So that again is another constant that we're working on. Regarding empty buses, if you went to the schools, you would probably see, you don't want to go to the schools when they're dropping kids off or when they're picking them up because the lines of parents at all of our schools are still, they're they're very, very long. There are still many, many parents that are driving their kids to school. You you don't want to go up to the middle school in the afternoon because you'll be on that hill for a long period of time. And a high school is difficult too, but the elementary schools still have long lines.
Right. Do we do we bus to the the Science and Technology High School in New London?
We bus to all of the magnet schools. We do have hubs now, which saves us quite a bit, Rita. But we do, and there is some money that comes back to the town for those magnet runs.
So even though New London, I thought New London supplied some of the buses themselves to get the students here in the elementary schools and middle school.
Now, Ledger and New London and Learn are the three different groups that we do get kids to.
We bus students to the magnet schools in New London. I I'm not talking about the multicultural magnet school or marine science or I'm talking about New London's magnet schools.
Yes.
We bus to them. I thought New London was going to be taking care of that if they wanted our students to go to those schools.
I can certainly ask that question. I'd be happy to. That would save us.
It's a short list of schools that we actually bus our our Groton kids to. I I can send, I can get that list to you and send it. I'll get it to Susan and then you can send it out in board notes or to them later.
I would appreciate that because, you know, if you have students going to Winthrop Elementary, Jennings or all the way down to Nathan Hale, that that's a a long way to go.
Yeah, those are schools we don't transport to.
Oh, you don't. So you don't do the elementary schools in New London?
We'll get you the list, Rita. That's a good thing we should all look at. Good question. Yep.
Dean.
So the buses that we well, a couple of questions. One is so whatever contract we enter into, if we say we're going to have forty eight buses, forty eight large buses and sixteen eighteen of the quota being and we discover through our own genius or through the genius of the program, Versa Tran, that we could save a couple of buses. We're allowed to say under the contract, we're not going to pay for the bus.
We can adjust the number of buses.
Yeah. First question. Second question is, and this is probably this is probably asked every year. I know it's asked every year, which is the buses that we plan to run, whether before an efficiency study or after a efficiency study, do we plan on the assumption that all kids will be on the buses?
There there is a policy that says that any student who has the right to right paraphrasing, but the right to ride a bus that we must give them a seat on the bus. So some of those, some of those buses that have not that many kids on it have some ghost students on that bus. They they are reserved seats for kids within the district.
How many, we know how many kids, we must know because they're they're parking spaces, but kids who drive to the high school, they're not on bus.
If they if they're if they qualify for riding the bus, they still have a a seat on a bus.
They're a ghost.
So when they're, well, when their car breaks down or
Well, yeah.
Whatever.
When their parent can't drive on the bus.
When they routinely drive to school because they, we got a practical car and Johnny can ride it. That's what we want him to do and he won't run the bus anymore.
What what we're looking at, Dean, for for the future and hopefully by next year, we can put it together is an opt out form for parents that are going to drive their kids every day or for a kid who's going to drive every day. They would opt out and then if they need to opt back in, it would, we give them a certain length of time before we'd be able to do that provided there is a seat on the bus that's going.
Doesn't, I don't know how much. And of course, there are parents who drive their kids to school. Their parents are driving kids to school every other day, but not every day, that sort of thing. And that's a, that's rough to get a handle on, but I think overall it's safe to say that we provide a capacity that significantly exceeds the actual use of the system. Which is fine, especially during COVID. Suppose or the MIRAC TA, but I mean.
But this opt out program is really interesting. So we're really gonna.
So when will we, when can we hear more about that? And does that go to financing facilities? I mean.
Once we get, once we get that put together, we'll go to finance facility.
Okay.
So can we implement it in this budget year?
I would say.
Beginning of a year or at the halfway mark, like January first, we could have done it after that if we.
I still don't think it's too late for next year if we don't get it here. Yeah, yeah. That would be good. Yeah.
Right.
All right. So the next section, actually, I I gave you new pages. I don't know if everybody has their new pages. I've got copies here.
Thank you.
I got limited copies here. But I will put it up on the screen as well. So for 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 this section, this replaces the back of the book. It replaces pages five dash five dash one oh three to five dash one oh eight. And this section is is mainly our out of district or tuition section. And and the reason it's it's more pages than before is we we broke out general education from special education just to make it less a little more easy to understand.
Okay, so what page are we on starting?
So we're going to start on page, new page, five dash one oh four.
So did we already do five dash ninety eight? Have I missed that?
We don't have that one on our list to do.
Not tonight.
Not tonight.
You don't want to do it tonight. Oh, okay.
Thank you.
So we're moving to out of district place tuition and placement, which is five dash one oh four to one oh eight. And we have new copies. We'll make sure board members have these.
They should have.
They should have them.
The numbers are good, but it's just we broke it up. So five dash one oh four and five dash one oh five now are is just the general education of students that we pay tuition for. And I added a little section in here to help us understand what we're paying for here. And this is the number of students that we, number of general education students that we paid for both last year and this year. It's on the bottom, it's kind of towards the bottom of five dash one oh four. There basically that little box. And this general education, student enrollment for BOAG magnet as of October one. So you'll see that last year for Ledyard, we sent thirteen general education students this year, eighteen, so that that number went up. But as far as the magnet, Learn and Correct Magnet Schools, one hundred and forty eight last year, one forty two this year, so that went down by six. And then the London Magnet Schools actually went down from sixty seven to forty eight. So that's a, that was a reduction of should be able to do that in my head, nineteen.
Nineteen, yeah.
So overall, a a decrease in the number of students, regular education students.
That should probably be highlighted because that's also part of, Dean, the conversation around intra district magnets. What we're doing with our schools and how are we saving money and we're providing better looking buildings and programming? And we're down by nineteen.
Um, Susan, New London Magnet, refresh my, I know what the BOAG is. But what are the schools for new, they learn and correct magnet and what's the school for New London?
So New London High School has magnets within the high school. So there's a STEM, there's an arts now. They might be even considering another. So they have multi magnets within the school.
That's so that would be New London Magnet.
New London. I don't know what the practice school is.
And the crack and learn.
Reggio, Reggio, right.
There's one magnet school.
Isn't that the one that's in like East Hartford? No.
We don't know. It's a, it's a school choi, it's a choice, a parent placed a child there. We don't have, I think we'll have one.
Is it like Riverview or something?
No, I it, I think that you have the name of it.
Reggio. It's a, yeah.
Reggio Mayo, I think.
It's a Howard Gardner. I don't think.
Is it like seven?
Of the intelligence.
New London High School is a district magnet school, so it's K through twelve. They accept you thirty six down.
So New London Magnet is K through twelve. Learn and crack is.
Are those like pre K to twelve because the Friendship School is in there?
Oh, okay.
Well, they don't have a middle school.
If if we could really identify what these, you know, learn and crack, what were the schools that are involved for learning crack? And what's the schools involved for the New London Magnet? It helps tell that story better. So.
We can do that. And then we get into the numbers.
Yeah, here are the numbers. And you'll see that we had we had budgeted just the thirteen students at BOAG. It actually came in higher at eighteen. So we are budgeting again for next year at eighteen at the higher number. So that's what's driving an increase in in BOAG. Then under the magnet school tuition, we had budgeted, actually, we we came in lower than what we had budgeted. So we are using the same number of students for the twenty four budget. But we've already gotten our increased rates from Learn and we're estimating a two percent increase on the on the New London.
So was Learn also two percent?
Learn, it was, it wasn't equal across the board. It was like two point seven, two to two point seven five.
I think the Special Ed, the Ocean Avenue Learning Center was going up the most.
That's probably true.
But this is a one point three percent decrease. So is it not a decrease or is it an increase?
It's a, it's a decrease in the number of students, but an increase in the rates.
So that's what it is when you add and subtract.
There's a reason I was so sick. Don't go.
I didn't mean in any derogatory way.
No, you didn't. So.
So it, so to decrease in students, but because of the pricing increase.
Okay, so got it.
But overall, a decrease.
Overall.
Under magnet, but increase in.
It would have even been a better decrease had they not raised the rates, but everybody's raising the rates.
So so we do have quite a few students. We know they no longer have their middle school. So was was that part of the decrease in students?
No, dual language has been closed for two years.
We, yeah.
Right. I know. But I'm just curious, two actually, but I was just curious. You know, because there were, we used to have quite a few students there. So maybe that's what the actual was for twenty one, twenty two?
I can say from experience, I've had quite a few students from Groton who have chosen to come back to Groton Middle School instead of going to Benny Dover and one of the pathways. We've had, we've had quite a few. I think the new middle school is.
The new middle school, the programs, I think, have really accentuated the positivity.
And I think it would be important um, just to remind the public that this, we have students that are going to a different district that have chosen this because of law. Is it because of school law that they have school choice?
Yeah.
Choice, but you know, especially young parents or parents that are, don't know this, think that needs to be part of the narrative that their, you know, students have, that parents have the ability for school choice.
Right.
That's a good place. That would be good to put down the problem description and budget narrative.
And we've had to market that we are one of their very viable choices. As a matter of fact, we have about twelve staff members, including moi, who will hang out at the Navy Rec Center at the end of February to say Groton is a very viable choice.
Beverly?
Thank you.
Ken, can can you tell me what is our per pupil cost for the BOAG school?
It is, it's around six thousand dollars. Oh, yeah, you're right. Six thousand eight hundred twenty three dollars.
Three dollars for letters.
Yeah.
Thank you. Beverly, do you have more? Do you have another question?
No, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So, Kim, I believe Friday is the day that the General Assembly is going to discuss about whether or not they'll pay for magnet tuition. So that there is a possibility that some of this may go away if they reimburse districts.
I think by FY twenty five that it actually takes effect. And it does give, I've shared that with the board. It would be a wonderful thing. I think I shared it at like one point eight.
I I didn't think it was FY twenty five. I thought it was sooner next year, I thought.
We've read that somewhere, but I'll I'll double check.
Yeah, okay.
I would love it for next year, but.
We can, for those of us who are going to the legislative breakfast on Friday at Montpel, this is another good thing to talk about about how it's great to have all these town magnet, you know, other town magnet schools, because I never remember if it's intra or in Trump. So I'm just going to say that, um, that it would really be helpful for all districts not to have to pay for our kids going to other school districts.
All right.
All right, if we go on to five dash one oh six, this is this is tuitions for special education students. And this was the section right on the bottom of this page is what we were updating. So this this is as of as of last week. And we broke out the number of students with IEPs versus the number of students that are getting direct services with with five oh fours. And we also break it up between active and entire year because these students tend to tend to come and go. It's hard to pinpoint an exact number. So the active is what we have as of right now. So as of right now, total IEP and five oh four students is a hundred and nine.
And they're done, do look like there's some efficiencies that perhaps we can even, as we go through the budget and do the adjusted budget, we might be able to reap some benefits from that. That was what I was hoping for. But you never know who's going to move into town.
You don't, you don't. This is, it's a it's an inexact science trying to figure this out, but.
And you can see that we we do have many more students with the five oh four plan. However, these are the students who receive a direct service through the five oh four plan that has a tuition associated with it. So those are the students that we counted. And again, we are seeing less agency placements. The focus of DCF really is in providing services in the home. So we're seeing less students placed out of the home. And we're seeing certainly you can see less magnet students. I was comparing it to last year, actually. If we look at last year, I'm sorry, we have a little bit more magnet. Yeah, we had less vocational, a little bit more board place for IEP. Same number of agency and then a little bit more magnet.
A little bit less on the agency.
Yeah, and Three Rivers Middle College has increased their total enrollment from sixty to eighty. So we have had a few more students go to Three Rivers Middle College. And we continue to see large numbers at Marine Science and the Friendship School.
So what's again, part of that narrative to add all the visiting schools out basically would make sense.
Yeah, yeah.
That makes sense. Because I forgot about the Three Rivers.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and that's a nice option for some students because it's a very small personalized program.
We've had students who've been very successful going from a large high school to a small program like that.
If we go down to the, um, to the cost section, uh, the way this one's broken out is we have, we have to specify whether, uh, these, uh, students are placed in public schools and non-public schools. And so that's what these two sections represent. Uh, the first section, function one, two, uh, four, one, two, one, on page five dash, uh, one oh seven is, um, is the costs for the students that are placed in public schools, which are the learn, uh, uh, learn.
Special education.
Special education program. I think it's also one correct program.
Yeah, River Street, Slowly Windsor.
Uh, and then the, uh, the bottom section, four, one, two, two, those are the costs to send, uh, the student to a non-public school. This would be the, like the Walker Country School.
They're called approved private special ed programs. Bradley, New London, Geno, Edelbrook, Waterford Country School. And those are students that we really, um, struggle to, to program for appropriately in district uh, because of the nature and severity of their disabilities. And we're always partnering with those schools to see, you know, when the students are ready to return back to the least restrictive environment.
We did, do you have a question?
Oh, I did. I had a question about the Three Rivers Middle College, um, or middle high school program. Is it just still for juniors and seniors, even though it increased from sixty to eighty students?
As far as I know, it is, yes.
Thank you.
Uh, in, in the cost, if I may, um, you'll notice that we do, we do, are projecting or budgeting a decrease in the, in the state place students, uh, as, as, for what, um, Denise was saying, uh, we have noticed a, a definite decrease in, in those costs, uh, but we have, um, budgeted an increase in the, uh, in the magnet school and the board place, uh, students.
The problem with the board place students is that we just don't know who's going to move in. You know, last summer, um, we had two students move in from a, a neighboring district who were both outplaced by their, their district. So it's, it's challenging because you just, you don't know who's going to register. Uh, we also get students through the military that we don't always know they're coming. And, um, you know, some of them, you know, have very significant disabilities that it's hard to program for in district such as, um, a student who's deaf or hard of hearing and needs to go to the American school for the deaf. So, you know, sometimes those costs are unpredictable. But we work very hard with our approved private special ed partners to, um, talk about when it's time for students to come back to be in their, their homeschool with their peers, have access to the enriching electives that we offer, that many of these, um, approved private schools do not have. Um, that's a real draw for a lot of our students to come back when they're ready.
Are these, um, the tuitions standardized? Everybody pays the same, every school district, or are they negotiating?
They're, they're different. It depends on what type of program they're offering. So Rita brought up earlier the learn Ocean Avenue Learning Academy in New London. It's by Mitchell College. Um, they have highly specialized staff on, on, um, in, on their team. So every student that we place there gets services from a BCBA. Um, every student has a one-to-one para. Um, so there's certain components to the program that learn provides for every student. They feel that's what they need to be successful. And their tuition is one of the more expensive in the region.
Let me correct, I, I stated that wrong. So Ledger was sending a student there. Do they pay the same?
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, we have a contract with every private school. And we, um, they have to submit their rates and how their tuition is calculated. So what percentage goes to staff, professional development, taxes, benefits, things like that.
So that's standardized.
Standard rates.
For districts versus negotiated.
Yes, thank you. Did the private schools, like, uh, let me pick up Waterford Country School for just a second. So if we have a student that is going to Waterford Country School and it's deemed by the IEP that he, that he or she then needs like occupational therapy services, do they contract? And I mean, I don't like, does that then add to the tuition bill? Okay.
Yes.
Because they, they have a contracted to our private schools.
The tuition is itemized and it's directly related to what's in the IEP.
Got it.
So even the number of counseling sessions per week are charged by a, a, a flat fee for that, those sessions, certain number of times a week. Um, same with OT, PT, speech. And that's why Jody, who works in Ken's office, she kind of goes back and forth between both offices, our tuition admin assistant is so critically important because not only does she cross-check those bills against the IEPs, um, but she communicates that there's a discrepancy.
Local.
So we have many eyes on them.
And.
Denise, do we supply the special, uh, like occupational therapist? Do we supply the, the occupational therapist ourselves? Because I remember our, our, um, maybe teacher of the deaf or, or whatever would, would have to leave our school and go over there. Is that still?
There are some schools who, that are a little smaller, that might not have, um, a full complement of related services staff. But most of them have come along. Most of them, even like Bradley School, they do have an OT. She's only there one day a week. So if our PPT can't meet on the day she's there, she submits a report. But we did use to send staff out to the, out of districts. It's becoming less frequent that we have to do that now.
Um, but Denise, if, if a student is going to, um, let's say Benny Dover or, and has a five oh four plan or for, for PT or OT, don't we send? And on the multicultural magnet school, don't we send our own PT?
No, I don't believe so. Learn, learn provides those staff that, at RMMS. And in New London, they contract with their own staff or hire them directly.
And then they charge us.
Yeah. The only staff we send out to the magnet or the, um, approved privates is a school psychologist because oftentimes the, in the therapeutic setting, they have clinicians or social workers that deliver the services. So when it's time to reevaluate a student, it's, um, often we have to send a school psychologist to do the actual assessment. Because they don't all have school psychologists on staff. But that happens for each child once every three years.
Thank you.
Continue the march.
All right.
Are we done with that?
We're done with that.
And so.
Thank you, everybody.
Hi Denise, thank you for your hard work.
Yeah, thank you very much. Pleasure to see everybody.
It's a pleasure to see you.
Would you want me to put these on the screen?
So we're now moving towards the CIP folks. You have the additional one. Can you pass that out, Sam? We have an additional sewer project that you didn't have information about. It's actually come to our attention on the vintage side of Fitch. And, um, so we will be adding that to the packet. And if you're, if you're not here in person, I'll make sure that Joyce sends you a copy digitally.
Thanks, Jim. So go ahead. I'm just giving you.
Of course.
Thank you, sir.
You're more than welcome to ask. Just don't ask. Sam, does Sam have a copy?
Yeah, I know.
All right.
Want to start with this?
Which one do you want to start with?
I can start with it. Okay, so William has a question, so let me start with there.
Just because it's my first time with this, could, can someone just give me the definitions for the capital reserve fund and general obligation bonds? Capital reserve fund is.
It would be like town.
That's town fund.
All right, so we have money allocated for those projects. Body, we have to specifically go out for money.
Okay.
That we don't have. I might, that's not right.
And then in order to bond, we would have to go to a referendum because the body, the gotten body would have to vote in a referendum, right? Is that like we did with some new schools? Okay.
They can't borrow without.
Yeah. Does that make sense?
Yes, and so that means we would need to get approval for them versus they're already, we already have those funds.
So be a little bit more specific.
So like for capital reserve funds, that's the source for all these on page one of the, um, the, the one that we got, which is the athletic facilities, field house, air quality. I mean, we already have those funds or.
So that, so that's interesting that you start with that. So let's see if I can answer this and, and not confuse the process. So the field house, um, and I believe you put a, a bleachers in one for us. Is that correct? Because that's what we asked you to do. Um, those are ones that would absolutely could not be covered by capital improvement, by the, the improvement funds that are given to, um, that, that the town would look at. We put them in as a board, um, in December, was it when we, we asked you to do that? Because we didn't want the town council to forget that even though we have this field committee that the bleachers, the field house and the athletic, what's that building called? Or the concession stand, um, need, need great attention. But my guess is, is that the moment that John Burt and his staff look at that, they're going to zero that out because that's really going to need to be a bonding issue.
Okay.
But we, I, I, I think most, I mean, I think that that was our general understanding is that we knew that that wasn't going to go forward, but we were talking about how serious we were about those projects.
Okay.
Does that, did that, does that feel like I summarized? How did I do? You did well.
Very well.
Scary that I'm starting to understand this. Twelve years in the making.
Shall I, shall I share?
Please.
Yep.
Sharing is caring.
There we go.
This is the first.
Okay, so the first item is the Fitch High School Athletic Facilities. This is the football field, the regrounding of the football field and adding irrigation to the football field. Amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, and I believe it was thirty thousand dollars for, uh, the irrigation, uh, which would give us, uh, a better efficiency in using the water. We actually have somebody going out there presently with a water cannon, watering the fields, uh, moving the cannon down. Yes, uh, moving the water cannon, uh, on an hourly basis or, or whatever, depending upon the amount of rain.
And the total cost is?
Like two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Do you want to ask questions as we go before we?
I, I think that that makes sense.
On each item.
And you guys, I'm going to, um, for those of us who on Zoom, I'm going to try to pay attention. But you might need to holler because there's only like five squares. I do know that once you raise your hand, you.
We could put this down.
Let's put this down so that we can see them. Yeah, there you go. So does anyone have questions about the, the football field and the crowning and the irrigation? This has been at least five years or four years that I remember that this has been here. Dean?
This is the, part of this, we don't have to do this. If we, we already, uh, depends on what the overall grand plan is, right?
Right.
Luckily, there's no grand plan. This is what this project would look like. Last year didn't go forward and, uh, they, they said that they were waiting to hear what the plan was from the field task force.
And we're still waiting.
Scott has placed over.
Yes.
Well.
So when we, when we go to propose our plans, we, like we are giving now the, the total plan, the steps we'll take, the timeline, everything? No.
No.
We give, we give them an estimate for the project. And they determine where the funds would come from if they grant it. And then we have, uh, by rule, we have five years to complete the project.
So when we get to a CIP, that's definitely going to be part of that capital project. How about if you walk us through? That would be helpful for me too. But because this one is just a little bit more difficult because it's got some more political drama to it, the, the, the football field. That makes sense.
Sure.
We restructure the whole thing. How does it go? So any other questions on the football field one?
Has anybody taken into consideration what the, um, injury, um, um, possibilities are with leaving a pass in it?
Well, it's too early for that. Uh, we have, we haven't discussed doing an artificial field. This would be for a grass field. This would be to continue a.
Are you saying that have already taken injuries that would have occurred because it wasn't crowned?
If this doesn't get through.
Right.
I'm, I'm asking about the possibility.
Of safety. For the crowning of the field and the irrigation.
Correct.
So if this doesn't go through in the field task committee recommends an artificial field, is that what you're asking?
No, no, she's saying, let's pretend that there's no field committee. And if this doesn't get passed, are people taking into account, I'm sure if I got this. Um, are, are they taking into account what the possibility of injury would be with a lack of crowning of the field? That's her question.
Right.
That's not mine.
Uh, I, I don't have any such report. I guess I would have to talk to the athletic director and see if something like that could be.
Nobody's considering that.
Uh, well, we don't know if people are not considering it, but, but I.
Well, that's my concern is that.
I'm going to recognize, oh, go ahead.
No, no. I just, my concern that it's, if, if something, then you bring it up because it's a.
The crown, the actual crown in the field is for drainage mostly. That's what the crowning in the field is. They actually crown it up sideline.
James, and then Dean.
I was just going to mention that, uh, that actually comes up every year. And when it, when it came up last year at the town council, I, I feel as though we're, we're just sort of in that movie Groundhog Day. We just have the same discussion every year. We have the same questions. We have the same answers. And last year, one of the town councillors said, "Football is an inherently unsafe sport to begin with." So they didn't feel that safety should even be considered. So I'm just mentioning that, not because I necessarily agree with it, but I'm just telling you that we're, you know, we're, we're in, we're in Groundhog Day.
Yeah. Thank you, Jay. That was my question. You answered. Thank you. Dean?
You can raise, you can raise the issue of safety with almost everything. It's kind of like saying, you know, the odds you being killed by a seal or a machine gun are very, very, very low, but they're not zero. Um, I have no idea what the stats are on, on crown versus on crown, probably drained versus probably, you know, improperly drained field. Um, I, I suspect that because we're talking about our team, our games, that as kids get hurt over the season or even ten seasons, we probably don't have enough statistics to be able to determine when they hurt because of the condition of the field or because they were slammed pretty hard or because of something else. Um, it's a follow-up to that one. I can't think of it, but I, other than raising the issue, you know, is safety, you know, are we considering the safety? Do we have real evidence that perhaps this is a safety issue? Or are we just raising it because frankly, it's a several bump in the down conflict maybe? Not, I'm not, you know, dummy to delittle, you know, the kids' safety by any means. Um, I'm just thinking. I don't know. I mean, maybe it's not like football, it's not a field, but.
William.
Yeah, I, I think the biggest safety issue is not so much about crowning and re-crown. It's that it's going to be real grass versus right now, the artificial turf, right? And on the trend nationally, it is migrating towards, uh, real turf versus the artificial turf because of, you know, not so much getting tackled and hitting it, but it's the spontaneous injuries due to the, to the nature of the artificial turfs, increasing the likelihood of Achilles tendon ruptures and ACL tears, um. So that's kind of a.
But on the issue of whether or not this is 280 and does that affect safety on the field? It's, to me, it's pure speculation. Real turf versus astroturf, separate question. I get you there. I've heard about that.
Right, let's move on.
Okay, so, um, we had the architect do a, a study on the field house slash, um, concession stand area um, to, uh, make it, uh, um, accessible for, uh, female athletes as well. And, uh, there were two, uh, recommendations from them or proposals. Uh, and they presented it to the athletic department and Mark and his team selected, uh, this, uh, option which would, uh, put, uh, all, all of the functions in one building. And it would be a new building. The buildings would be knocked down. Brand new building would be built. And it would be a new building. The buildings would be knocked down. Brand new building would be built. At the expense of fifteen million, four hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
And I just want to preface that we were asked to put this in just as a kind of placeholder to realize that, because we hear a lot of times from councillor that, that the buildings are just in a horrible. Condition and I agree. But this would be something that would have to go out to bond. So it's really not even worth the debate, but it was kind of a placeholder. To show that this is something that needs to be done for the town in the future.
Fine, just because it goes out for bond referendum, it's gonna.
Well, that's true. But I'm just saying, we're just making sure it's on. Yeah, well, it's out there now. They know we've done the planning. My understanding, um, and Jay, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we agreed to pay for the architect's study. From our, from our.
Our own funds, because they wouldn't even do the plan, but now we know.
So now, now they get to see what the plan is, right? So we have a couple of those coming up. All right.
This could be tricky. Concessions felt wrong.
Oh. We'll fix it.
Just.
You got that?
Yeah, I know. I just wanted, you know, because it is this. From the school situation and feel.
All right, let's move on. Thank you.
You're welcome. What's next, Northeast?
And this one is not for next year.
This is not for next year.
So we really don't need to sunset, but it's just to keep our eye on it for the.
Again, uh, we've instituted a, a process where we are taking care of the humidity. Uh, by um. Active dehumidification. Uh, costs us a bit more in oil because we run the heat at the same time we're running. The air uh, to dry it out. Um, but.
It's worked.
Uh, it, it has mitigated the problem at this point, so um, we pushed this out another year.
Next.
The two hundred and fifty thousand dollars would do two units on the building. There are ten units on it, so it was five years of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um. So I mean, Northeast is not a brand spanking new school, but with the exception of the school that it just built, it's one of the newer ones that we cast and call that.
Fifteen years old already.
Yeah, yeah. So is this a problem that comes with the school's age or was it something with the, the way the school was built? Um, it, it has been a problem since the building opened. Okay.
And it's on of wet land. It's on wet. It's always, even the school prior to it had issues.
Because I know that there's some features to these buildings. Now, for example, on Northeast. The timbers. They're wonderful, except that once they're exposed, portions of their exposed don't need to be treated. They look great when they were new. But now we have down a lot of the makeups that we didn't have before. That's. Decorative, that's nothing else. So I'm just wondering whether this is one of these things where, you know, in that category of. It's great when we got it and, you know.
I think you were on the town council when I asked to uh, refinish. The beams on the, on the, on the buildings.
Yes, yes.
Well, created quite a stir in town because people didn't recognize that once we had exposed. Wood to the elements that we would need to. Refurbish them.
Yeah.
Every so many years.
Something else should have been designed. And I know there's a lot of details in the school. Sometimes stuff gets away from you. Uh, not, not you, I mean, the designers.
It's okay. This is good. I'm also slowing it down a little bit, so.
Next. Fitch and Barnum HVAC. Okay, so the Fitch HVAC and Charles Barnum HVAC projects were um. We had a study done by uh. R L E, which is Resource Electric. Lighting and electric. Uh, and we are finishing up the estimate on that to get that in. Uh, before we meet with the town council and the planning commission.
So it's still got a TBD.
But again, the construction would be done in the following year.
But this is really for FY twenty twenty five.
Yes.
And the, the state had a grants that they have was a hundred and fifty million.
Yeah, we did submit, we did submit that grant. We submitted to that grant. We were just talking about that today in our. Central office meeting. Um. Initially, the state told us they would have an answer by the end of January. But I was told uh, at the state level, uh, they have, they had so many uh. Applications for these projects that they actually stopped doing. All other grant. Applications, meaning school buildings or anything else until they solve this. And today we were told that we should hear by the end of February. When we got that grant, sorry. Again, that would take care of this. Polinary. Polinary arts at Fitch High School. Again, that's another study that uh, we took on. Here in our, in, in, in our operating budget. And uh, the estimate that we got before the plans were done. Uh, was six hundred thousand dollars for the construction, which again would be. Done. Over the summer. So we're looking for six hundred thousand dollars to do the construction.
Okay.
Security cameras. So Dr. Kennedy is here with us to talk about this piece.
This big ongoing conversation, this two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars reflects the. Larger plan and um. That we've been discussing, really three tiers. Uh, first tier is to fill in the gaps for both internal, external cameras. Uh, across all of our schools. Uh, second tier is really to pull together all those cameras. Right now, we have systems that are school-based. So if we want to access those systems, we need to be at that school. They are not unified. I don't have the ability to hand it account to Sam or Susan or to whomever.
The police.
Or the police, thank you, absolutely. Um. To be able to access those buildings remotely, uh, ad hoc when they need, should a emergency arise, what have you. That third tier that is not part of this, but is an additional piece that we're about to get to is really that mutual link system that we've discussed. We've had ongoing conversations with. The police departments in town and others where it leverages an install base of cameras. First tier, it, it leverages that second tier of bringing those comprehensive programs, pull those all together. So it's web-based and, and accessible. That third tier is when we have a emergency, we can identify the location. We can bring an open channel to that. That includes all the stakeholders that need to be part of that conversation. And it automatically activates those cameras that are within proximity. Part of that be reason being, for example, we provide access to the high school and over a hundred cameras to those police officers. Um, for a call that comes in, they then start the process of going through a hundred cameras to identify what they need to look at to help them resolve the issue and so forth.
And then if we have the ability to locate it. So that someone would have a panic button to be able to say, this is where the problem is.
This, this includes updating and expanding both of the panic buttons as well as the blue light cameras in, in areas that we have.
And walkie talkies that are the kind that the police are using so we can be right on the right channel.
So that is reflected in the two hundred.
So that is what we.
The most, that's the uh.
That is the first two tiers. There's a separate, just to paint the full picture, the third tier, that top one, the mutual link system. Is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is a separate CIP ask. So this represents those two tiers.
Okay, this is what we've submitted for the ARPA funds. So we're not sure where this is gonna go, um, but we wanted to make sure we had it here too as a placeholder to say that this is still. A security plan that we really feel has a sense of urgency to get accomplished. And the police agree. We meet all the time and they're really partners in on this. Dean.
So. Once everything is all linked up and. You have a system that can be accessed more remotely than being on site, correct? What's the subject of the logic of the hacking? There's never one hundred percent security in any situation. Uh, we would test, we would be very careful with whom we provide that access to. We review that on a regular basis. So um, again, I would never sit up here and tell you there's a hundred percent security uh, possibility. But these are systems that are used extensively throughout. And again, we've had conversations around what is the appropriateness of who outside of Board of Education would access that when? Those details we would work out in some kind of policy uh, regarding that.
And we learned today at a safety meeting that we involved the entire campus. At the high school, middle school in Grosso, that the state police, because they were there. Have actually purchased this mutual link and are looking for the local police departments and fire departments to also buy into this.
So is, are we gonna wind up in the future with it not just a connection between the schools and the police, for example? With schools, the police, state police? Any other authorities? How far off this is, how far over does this go?
I will only comment on the technical component of that. Technically, it would be feasible if I were given marching orders to connect that and make that happen. But again, I believe there could be policy in place that would protect the Board of Education, the local police department, the state police department and those engagements.
We, we could, any first responder would could actually give access to.
But we would give the access.
Right. But now we're saying increases the possibilities of. Well, a hack, a hacker could be mischievous, a hacker that could be frail.
Or it could be a security feature that would save a lot of lives.
Right now, depending on how the building is compromised or what we may or may not be able to do. I can't guarantee full access to any police officer that shows up at a school, get access to that.
Good question, Dean. Thank you. Any other questions? Liz?
Um, you were saying additional cameras. Have, have the consideration been to put cameras in the hall area? I mean, not hall, but the stairwells?
Uh, I'm assuming you're referring to Fitch High School. That would be an affirmative, yes.
Yeah.
Because.
And yes.
That's.
Another example is out in front of where the buses are at Rock Middle School, the way that the camera was placed externally out there. It's at, it's tucked in between the. At that main exit and we can't get the four hundred and eighty degree view of all the buses. So the plan is to move that arm out. Put a new camera on there to cover all things of that nature. There have been pain points that have been communicated through building admin that we've been this addressed.
All right, moving on.
This is that. Well, mutually.
So this is the mutual link?
Yeah, correct. This is that top tier.
Right, so Dr. Kennedy stole my thunder on this one, so I will just report that uh, we are asking for a hundred and fifty. Elegantly, he did. Um. Uh, we're asking for the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the mutual link would cost to install in our district.
So in total, we're asking for the town for the three hundred and ninety-five dollars. Which is still cheaper than what we were.
Five hundred.
The five hundred that we were doing for the, our, as a. Yep.
And it's connecting multiple town blocks.
Yep. Yep, we did find some, you know, things that we probably would have to take care of. Separately. I think in my conversation with uh, Mr. Burt, that I think that the town has some. Has some wants to be able to fund this.
Yeah, I, I think that I've heard that too. I, I've heard that too. They're very interested in this.
Uh, we talked about the bleachers a little bit here in the recent past. And so we have uh. I, I spoke to um. Uh, the company that uh. I built the bleachers at Ledger, uh, when I was back in Ledger. So I spoke to the company that actually did the bleachers for me there. And got the estimate for what it would cost in today's dollars without going out to bid. So it's an estimate again. Uh, so we're looking at the.
Close to a two million dollar project.
A million dollars.
Yep.
And how many bleachers is that, Sam? Is that gonna be the same?
It would be on both sides. It would be, it would give us the same number of seedings that we have presently. Although it would also give us uh, handicap access. You know, you have to have, I have a, a, a wide row in front for handicap. Et cetera, so.
Now, is two million within the threshold of a CIP or is that, would that also be a bonded project?
It'll be up to the town to decide.
I think it's past a.
I would.
Dean, would you know the answer to that?
How many?
Two million. Two million. Is that above the capital?
I don't remember what the town like.
I know. Okay.
But that is the two. We wanted the field house and concession stand and the bleachers to be put into a CIP so that. Um, and with us getting an estimate. So we're, it's a placeholder.
Yep.
Yeah, fine, you're the, the other projects.
Yep.
No, really?
They're all, they're all competing.
I know, they're all same dollars. I know.
And while we're in between, I, I should let you know that I did get a text. Uh, I sent out a, a question a little bit ago. Somebody asked about buses to Sacred Heart. We actually have three buses going to Sacred.
But they're not only used for Sacred Heart. We use them after they've dropped off the kids.
Yep.
So, yeah. Um, are you ready for the big one? The one that's come up recently or? Is that where we're onto?
Well, it's not big dollar wise compared to some of the.
No, but it has to be done like now.
So um.
This is a priority.
So we learned of a little problem that we had at Fitch High School in the tunnel.
On the vintage side.
Was it, it's down by the gym or by the wood shop in that area. So it's all underground, under slab, et cetera. Uh, these are uh, original sewer pipes lines. From when the building was built.
Fifty-four.
Uh, and uh, so we had uh. Closed circuit TV cameras going down through these pipes to determine the conditions, which I have lots of photos of. And many of the pipes have actually disintegrated. And so the water is flowing through essentially a. Ground tunnel um. To where it needs to go, uh, or will be collapsing, that sort of thing. So um.
Details.
This, this would be uh, money to make those repairs to those areas.
It doesn't fix it? It just repairs it?
It, it repairs it and uh, in certain areas, they would actually do a ceramic lining. Where the pipe is gone, they do a ceramic lining to make uh, essentially.
Recreate.
In that area. We're not gonna do that.
No.
Okay. Things like this. That need to be fixed. Pretty much immediately. How, how do they get done?
We uh. We, we called in a company that specializes in this. Uh, and we had them there um. About three days, I think. Uh, and. We made the repair so that uh, we go on until we're able to make the repair when school was not in session.
They were able to.
Mitigate. I don't know if it's a total repair.
Okay, all right.
Part, part of the problem is, is wait for.
I know, I know. They were able to do just enough, but we have more work to do.
Rita? I, I was just curious, um, who paid for the? The repairs that were done?
My budget paid for it.
Yeah. Our budget. And how much did that come to?
Not our best, or we, we paid for that through operating.
And how much? Yeah.
Was her question.
Can you remember?
I'm sure it was a substantial amount.
Yeah, it was. I, I, I'm, I'm trying to, trying to, I could probably look it up.
We can get that to you.
Oh, that, that's, I was just curious. I mean, if we're asking the town for seventy-five thousand to reconstruct it, we've already put in.
We have, you're right.
In, in, in the neighborhood of twenty thousand dollars.
I think it would be good to, you know, state that.
Good point. I, I agree.
Again, when we go to planning and let them know that we've done that, spent that kind of money.
Thanks.
Any other CIPs?
No.
That's it.
What about this one here that says school needs summary? Do we have to go over that? Or did I miss it?
No, that's just a um.
Did we do that?
That, that's a blurb that we put in the front to uh, remind the uh. Town council and the RTM that there are ongoing issues in some of our schools.
Older schools. And I think that that was asked on by the finance and facilities is that we don't want people to forget. The fact that there's so many other projects that have not been able to be. Um, or we have asked for and they have not. Been done.
Motion to adjourn.
Sorry.
I have a first and a second for adjournment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Abstain. Motion is carried. Good night, guys. See everyone uh, at six on Wednesday.